Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV candidate debate. I'm your moderator, Ben Hale. Glad to be joined today by the candidates running for Centerville City Council. Let me introduce them to you. First, we have Zach Naess, Matt Montane, Russ Kosky, and Tom Wood. Thank you all for being here. There is a fifth candidate in this race, but they decided not to participate in our debate today. We're going to start our debate with opening statements. After that, we'll go into a question and answer segment. After we are done with the questions that I have for the candidates, they'll have an opportunity to ask their opponents a question if they choose, then we'll finish with closing statements. The opening statements are one minute. Zach, you're in the first chair, so you get to go first, and you're up now.
Hi, my name is Zach Naess. I graduated from Forest Lake High School, and immediately after graduation, I joined a local 34 plumbing program where I became a plumber. After getting my plumbing license, I joined a small-time shop out of Forest Lake where I currently work, and I was brought on to run some of the bigger jobs that they have had, and so far, I've done a pretty good job, and they still have me around. So, and yeah, I think based on that, being able to make all those tough decisions and being able to budget, plan, and everything like that, I think that kind of makes me a pretty good candidate for city council. You know, I see a lot of different people, so I get to see many things from different angles, you know? So, I think all that wrapped into one is why I would make a good city councilman.
Thank you for your opening statement today. Matt Montane, you are next with your opening statement.
Hi, I'm Matt Montane, a lifelong resident of the area, graduate of Centennial. I'm currently a municipal and industrial land application consultant. I run day-to-day operations of our family company. I'm also a member of the Centennial Fire District. I was 2014 Instructor of the Year and 2014 Public Educator of the Year, and then 2015 Firefighter of the Year. With the Fire Department, I also serve on the North Metro Specialized Rescue Team and enjoy every single day getting to be a part of it. I'm also currently on the Centerville City Planning and Zoning Commission, serving on there, I'm the second-longest-tenured member currently. Between all my experiences, my lifelong residence of the area, I think that I make myself a pretty good candidate out there for it, being able to see everybody's sides, my experiences that I've gone through, my business experience, and I want to thank North Metro TV for having us today.
Thank you for your opening statement. Russ Kosky, you're up next with your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Russ Kosky. I am a 22-year resident of Centerville, and I am running for Centerville City Council. A little bit about my background. I put myself through college attending the University of Minnesota Duluth, where I earned a bachelor's degree in business administration. I currently work for a Twin Cities-based company and have for the past 20 years, and also serving on Planning and Zoning Commission for the past five years. In an effort to further educate myself on planning and zoning matters, I actually took some personal time off to attend some continuing education workshops sponsored by the League of Minnesota Cities. As a Centerville resident, to participate in the public input process, I have attended numerous city council meetings and public hearings over the years, and more recently, I've taken a look at the development in surrounding communities around Centerville and how their growth will impact the city.
Thank you for your opening statement today. Tom Wood, you are next with your opening statement.
I'm Tom Wood. First of all, I'd like to thank the other gentlemen here for coming to the debate. It's very nice to see them again. I grew up in rural Wisconsin, graduated from UW-Stout, worked my way through school. I have a bachelor's in business and a minor in human resources and safety. I have spent the last 11 years on planning and zoning, and recently had left planning and zoning for my own personal reason. I'm looking forward to possibly serving on the city. I've coached various sports from high school cross-country, the bowling, and still continue to coach today. I like what I do. I do it well.
Thank you for your opening statement. We're going to move in now to our question and answer segment. We'll be changing the order. Matt, you'll be first on this first question. Let's talk about development. Knowing that you cannot always pick and choose the development that comes your way as a city council member, what in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see in Centerville?
With Centerville, we're limited in the area that we have. We're not getting any bigger, and we're kind of, you know, our location's a draw to people that are there. Currently, we're home to right around 80 businesses that currently work out there. Want to be able to see them prosper. Anybody that would want to be able to come in, one, we'd want to make sure that we look forward to what they have to offer the city. You know, it's not something where we could see, you know, a landfill probably isn't going to fit in there, one for the residents, and then two for the businesses around them, too. But being able to see what they have to offer, the area that we have, one, because they should be able to prosper, but then, two, looking at the growth of the city with what we have left.
Thank you for your answer. Russ, same question to you now as we move down the line. What in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see in Centerville?
Well, I think the city owns, I believe, five parcels of property, and right now, those parcels are not bringing any tax revenue for the city. And I'd like to see those properties marketed and to attract new business into Centerville. Economic development is very important and very key to increasing, quite frankly, we need to increase our tax base a little bit, and I think getting economic development, businesses, and commerce into the city would be a big, big help to that, and I think that's what I'd like to see the city do and get very, very active in promoting those properties and attracting commerce to the city.
Thank you for your answer. Tom, same question to you now. What in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see for Centerville?
Centerville has the city lots, and I agree with Mr. Kosky, that those lots are sitting empty. It looks like metal. I would like to see the city market that, but not necessarily as a market value property, but possibly an under-value the property to get the people in there so we can develop the businesses for the city. They're not doing any tax revenue when they're sitting empty, and we've been sitting on them for several years. The other thing I'd like to see is, you know, we have small businesses there. I would like to see those continue to prosper, but also bring in something that the community would want. Right now, we lack restaurants of any quality, and I'd like to see more development so more of the people in Centerville will come out.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, come to you now with this question. What in terms of new business development or redevelopment would you like to see in Centerville?
I think we need some more residential properties. We need to get more people into the community, and I think if we get more people into the community, eventually, new businesses and commerce will come, you know? Like most other cities, as soon as, like, they build apartments or things like that, they see a need in restaurants, they see a need in, you know, certain other things, and I think if we get more and more people into Centerville, not necessarily take away from our small-town feel, but there's some undeveloped land that we could probably use and build some homes, and then if we do that, we can certainly get more businesses to come, and then Centerville as a city will grow.
Thank you for your answer. Like I said, I'll offer 15 seconds of extra time or rebuttal time after each question. Does anyone want it after this first question?
I guess I'd just like to add that I think we're all on board that we'd like to see commerce come to the city there. With our limited space, I don't want to make sure, you know, we should make sure that who's coming in is exactly right for what we have to offer. You know, again, we're a small town. We don't want to lose that small-town feel.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll move on to the next question. Russ, you'll be first on this question. If you were elected to the city council, what is one thing that's on your mind that you would like to accomplish as you sit at that city council and sit at those meetings?
Well, I think the one thing I would like to see happen is, again, it's kind of a reoccurring theme for me, but is the tax burden on the city residents? The tax burden's quite high in the city of Centerville, so I'd like to do something as much as we can and look at different options to try to help people out and at least stem the tide a little bit on tax and levy increases. So, I think economic development is very big with that, attracting businesses into Centerville. I think working and taking care of the businesses that we currently have in Centerville and getting more activity in the city, anything to drive traffic to help with increase in some tax base, and we do need that, and I think that's one thing that I would like to see, and part of that would be to make sure we're spending our tax dollars that we get now efficiently.
Thank you for your answer. Tom, same question to you now. If you were elected to the city council and you're sitting in those meetings, what is one thing on your mind that you'd like to accomplish?
I would definitely like to see the industrial park where the city owns the five lots developed. That will increase our tax base. It will reduce some of the stress on the residents, and it'll also give the opportunity to put employment for the residents right in Centerville. That would be, for me, the utmost accomplishment I can think of for the city. The other is to naturally reduce the budget, and I have 20 years of accounts payable experience, and in that, I've saved companies between $60,000 and $2.4 million a year just by auditing their invoices for errors, and using that, I would also like to see the budget much more balanced at a reduced amount.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, same question to you now. What is something that you would like to accomplish if you were elected to the city council?
I think the biggest thing is taxes. Taxes are going up every year, so we need to figure out a new way to increase revenue, whether that be with more residential properties or, you know, more commercial, and then we need to, we need to be more open to certain things being built and stuff like that. We should build, be more, we should like, we should build more apartments, or we should look in maybe condos or something like that, because we have a lot of spaces that, you know, there's not much there, so to build it efficiently, we might need to build apartments there or condos, and I know not everybody's going to agree with it, but it's one of those things where as a city, affordable houses is one thing that we need to offer, and that's one of the ways that we can do that. With that increased market, we can see, we'll probably see more businesses being built here, because, like I said, the increased need for certain things.
Thank you for your answer. Matt, same question to you now. What is something that you would like to accomplish if you were elected to the city council?
Kind of rehashing everybody that's gone through, but we want to see economic growth. We want to see businesses come in forward, but one of the things I'd like to see is transparency in the account, or in the budget itself. When you look at a neighboring city's website, you know, you can pull up their budget line by line, what the money's spent on. With Centerville, it's a little bit harder to delve through. It's not, we're not hiding anything. They're not trying to pull one over on us for it, but it's just the ease of use to track it down. With that, then, being able to dig through there and making sure that we're spending all of the tax dollars efficiently, whether it's something from having to redo a road. Well, the person that just did the road, whatever contractor that may have been, could we have got that warranted, or should they be warranting their work? Is it something where we bought some flowers for a park and they didn't make it as long as we wanted? Little things like that where just seeing where the money's being spent and making sure that we're getting 100% of what we put into it.
Thank you. Would anyone like that rebuttal or extra time? It does not appear so, so I'm going to move on to talking more specifically about the budget. I've heard it come up a couple times already. Tom, you're first on this question. How will you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there was extra funds that were coming into the city, where would you want to direct those dollars to first? How would you prioritize?
The first priority, of course, is keeping the infrastructure of the city in place so we don't have additional expenses or costs that are unforeseen or not budgeted for. The other things I would be the spending on some of the local festivities and that. Do we really need to spend the money that we spend on them? Not everybody likes the wants, but in a budget, there's wants and then there's necessities. So, in the infrastructure is the necessity right away. After that is the growth of the community.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, same question to you. How would you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there were extra dollars, where would you want to direct those funds to first?
I think the biggest thing is public safety goes up every single year, so we might need to look at some sort of way to fix that, whether it be, you know, getting out of the agreement that we have with the other cities for law enforcement, maybe teaming up with Lionel Lakes or something like that, maybe, you know, you know, looking for something like that. So, I think we need to look at all of where we're spending the money, what keeps increasing every year, and maybe invest in it, look into it, and see if there's any other way that we can do something. It's like, yeah.
Thank you for your answer. Matt, same question to you now. How would you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? And if there were extra dollars, where would you want to put those to?
I think it goes back to my last answer as well, being able to, line by line, going through there. At our company, there's times where, frankly, if a job isn't going, or we lose a job, or the job ceases to exist, we still have to operate. It's just where we're going to do it. You know, a tax increase isn't always there, so taking a look at public safety, public works, the city itself, you know, those are the majority of our costs. I think 50% or more of our budget's public safety, and then the rest, or the majority of the rest is, you know, public works. You know, making sure that we're getting what we're putting in and efficiency. If we could have one person doing the same job as two people are doing now, that's one thing. Is there other grants that we could be doing, or anything that we could do with other cities to help relieve that cost? Another option we could do then, too, is with certain city functions that we have, whether it be snow plowing, roadwork, things like that, is there a chance that we could go out by a third party or an outside contract to be able to do it at a cheaper rate or a more efficient rate?
Thank you for your answer. Russ, going to finish up this question with you now. How would you prioritize when it comes to the city budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? And if there's additional money, where would you want to push that money to?
You know, I think, to echo some of their sentiments here that have already been brought up, is public safety being 53% of the city's budget, if I did my math correctly, I think that's something that we need to look at. Are we spending our money wisely on public safety? I think for the most part, most people want, public safety is very, very important to the community, but it is such a large portion of our budget. Are we getting the most efficiency out of it? We have an outstanding police and fire force, and it's, we want to maintain that, but are we doing and spending those dollars efficiently? I think the other thing the city should, we need to look at closely is our contract, contracts that we have. For example, with trash collection and recycling, are we getting the best value? Are we getting the best prices for these services that the city has to pay for?
Thank you. Anyone want rebuttal time after that question? Okay, we're going to move on now to talk about one aspect of public safety. Zach, you'll be first with this question. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers that are active at all times?
You know, I do. I think that, you know, with everything that's going on with all the communities that are, you know, people are taking, you know, videos and photos and everything of law enforcement, they might as well have the same thing. They might as well just have it on them so then when something does arise, because you know it's going to, at least they have that footage to show people and to say, hey, in this situation, this is what I had to do, or, you know, at that time, this was the best option that I thought. I think that it'll only help the police and everybody else and show them, hey, we're not bad guys. We're just out there trying to do our job in the best way possible.
Thank you for your answer. Matt, same question to you. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers that would be active at all times?
I'm lucky enough to be able to work with them from the fire side. We see them on calls, any medical that we go to, they're there for it. I trust, and again, they do a great job for it. I do support the use of body cameras for it. The cost that it takes to go through there is something that, frankly, we have to deal, and that's one of the reasons that our public safety cost is going up so much as well. I think it, one, gives us insurance for everything that we do that we know that's there. I don't believe that they'd be doing something, you know, not portrayal of a cop, but it's something that, you know what, it's another insurance policy for the city itself, Centennial Lakes PD, and it's a reassurance that everything we have is there. So, yes, I do support it, even at the cost that it's coming to the cities.
Thank you for your answer. Russ, same question to you. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers that would be active at all times?
Yeah, I would. I would, and I think I'm a big supporter of what law enforcement does and fire and emergency folks, responders, and so on, and I do think it would be a good idea for the officers' protection and for the protection of everybody involved. The question is, of course, how do we pay for that? Because those types of things are not, there's a cost to that, so I think we have to look at ways, if we're going to go down that, in that direction, we need to make sure we're getting any possible grants from the state or the county or even the federal government to pay for these types of things. But yes, I am a big supporter of law enforcement, of emergency workers and firefighters, and I would support body cameras.
Thank you for your answer. Tom, we'll finish up with you on this question. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers that are active at all times?
Yes, I do, but as the other gentleman said, there is a cost to this, and the cost may be a burden. However, when you think about insurance cost and liability insurance, does that offset that liability insurance by the cost of those cameras on the officers? And then there's the other question for the public's safety or information, if they're not responding to something as a criminal offense or something that would cause that, such as an emergency or other things, the ability to either turn them off or not have them at those times that that occurs for the protection of those in the city.
Thank you for your answer. Does anyone need rebuttal time after that? Okay, let's talk about roads. Matt, you'll be first on this question. What can be done to make streets safe in your city, make them safe for residents, but also keeping them efficient and accessible for drivers at all times, too?
I think one of the things that we've been doing, the presence of trails all the way through, especially through the residential areas, makes it from, or makes it safer for everybody to get to that. One, going to the school, going to the parks, makes it a lot safer than people just walking down the side of the trails. I personally live on a county road. I do not have a trail going in front of my house, and it's one of the busiest county roads that go in and out of the city. Centerville's fed by county roads, so it's also making sure that the county itself is doing their part to ensure that the traffic flow that we see, even with the developments coming up and the developments around the area, making sure that the roads are meant to feed, or are big enough to feed the population that we have. Not, again, we're fed by county roads in all directions, but just because south of us or north of us may be a different county or a different city, making sure that the county is able to help us out through our end as well.
Thank you for your answer. Russ, what can be done to make streets safe in your city, keep them safe for residents, and also keep them accessible and efficient for drivers?
Well, I think with roads, there's always a cost maintaining roads, so no matter what we do, we're going to have to pay for some of it, but I think maintenance, preventative maintenance, I'd rather pay a little bit upfront and maintain the roads than have to pay for major road construction projects down in the future. So, I think good maintenance and whether that's, the city does the maintenance themselves or it's contracted out. Again, we need to make sure we're getting the best value for the dollars we spend on any contracted services, but I think looking at maintenance and keeping everything, correcting things and staying on top of it is important. Also, a few years ago, they did start, how we're going to pay for all these road projects, they did start a fund essentially, where we're putting some dollars aside to help with these costs of street improvements, which is a big benefit.
Thank you for your answer. Tom, what can be done to make streets in your city safe for residents and keep them accessible and efficient for drivers?
One of the things I notice in some of the streets and areas where someone's having a get-together or party is that we get too many on the narrower streets, we get too many cars on both sides, and it's very hard for a car to go through and worry about children crossing and that. If you limit it to one side, I know it's somewhat of a burden to the people on the one side, but it also creates a safety that your eyes can focus on that. The city did put together, as Mr. Kosky said, the budget for limiting the cost to the residents for street improvement. The only thing that they did on this last one is they did not have a warranty, and some of the manhole covers were about an inch deep, which is the same as having a pothole in the road. I would like to see them monitor that more closely when they do do street improvements.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, we'll finish this question with you. What can be done to make streets in your city safe for residents while keeping them accessible and efficient for drivers?
I think maintenance on the roads is like, is a big thing, making sure that if we want to do major renovations, that we get two or three different quotes from different companies to check warranties, see which one lasts longer, and how much maintenance would be. That's one of the biggest things, and making sure that we have sidewalks and things like that, so people can go walk around the city and get, you know, from their house to the parks without having to walk on the road. I think another one of the biggest things is by quick or the old shell, they don't have any, you have to wait in line for a yellow arrow or a green arrow, and I think maybe they should have a yellow arrow or something like that for people coming east and west, because I see a lot of people who get frustrated and just run it, or I see a lot of people get angry, and I think getting people off the roads, getting them home, and making sure that everything's running efficiently will keep the roads safe.
Thank you for your answer. Let's see, next question, Russ, you'll be, I'm sorry, did anyone want rebuttal time after that question? Forgot to ask. All right, I think we're good. Russ, on this question, you'll begin. One of the important parts of being a city council member is you're a face of the city. People know who you are, and how will you be an advocate for Centerville?
Well, you're right. It's one of those things that comes with the territory and the job. You're out there, and, but I think part of being on council and being an advocate for the city is trying to set a good example, you know, and that's what I've always tried to do. As a member of the community, I try to do my part to help out, and that's kind of why I'm doing this, and to set a good example, to get other people involved, and to promote the city, and let's accentuate the positive things about the city, and let's see if we can't do a little more to do that, to promote our city, little public relations or whatever, and that's what I try to do. Put the city first, positive, the positive aspects of the city and promote that, and try to set a good example.
Thank you for your answer. Tom, same question to you. How would you be an advocate for Centerville?
As a city council member, I would. As you said, you're in the public's eye, therefore, you're accessible, you're respectful. You show that you volunteer, you act within your community, such as Matt's on the Fire Department. That's fantastic. Those are things that you need to do, but you also need to stand ground when you need to, but you need to explain things diplomatically understandable. It's like running a business. People come in and they can pass the word that it is. One person comes in and it's a negative aspect, they tell 10 people. Nobody ever tells the positive, but if you portray that positive aspect, it will portray upon the community.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, how will you be an advocate for Centerville?
I think maybe during, doing food drives and things like that to give back to the community, maybe toy drives, stuff like that for around Christmas time, you know? Not everybody is prospering like your neighbors, so maybe giving back to the community, helping out your community, you know, and being there when somebody's going through a hard time. And yeah, I think helping out and staying in the community and staying together is what a city councilman should do for their city.
Thank you for your answer. Matt, we'll finish with you on this question. How would you be an advocate for Centerville?
I think, simply put, pride. I take pride in where I live. I love where I live, love every aspect for it. Centerville has a lot to offer, everybody, people just visiting, people that live there, businesses, showing people what it has to offer and making sure that while I'm there, I'm setting a good example, showing everybody what it has to offer, and continuing to take pride in everything that I do, whether it be from the fire side, whether it be from the city council side, or currently, as I do, from the planning and zoning side.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? All right, we're going to move to my last question for the evening now. This is a question that we're This is a question that we're asking in every single debate that we do, so all 17 debates here at North Metro TV are hearing this same question. It's the only one that everyone's hearing. Tom, you're first on this question. Across America, we are seeing deep divisions between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, and political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and right in your own neighborhood? Tom, you're first.
The spirit, everybody's the same. And you treat everybody with respect, with dignity. I was raised that your neighbor is your friend, your community is your home. Those are the things that I feel are something that doesn't have any discrimination, any racial problems, or anything else. We are all, we all bleed the same color. So when you look at it with socioeconomic, it's a matter of respect towards your fellow man, in the golden rule, basically in a nutshell.
Thank you for your answer. Zach, you're up next with this question. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
I think urging everybody to come together as a community and helping each other out, I think it'll wipe that out, you know? Standing together as a community, because we're all in this together, and as a community thrives, you know, our lives will get easier and things like that. So I think, you know, helping everybody out, letting them know, and yeah, just making sure everybody helps each other out to stay a community and stay strong.
Thank you for your answer. Matt, you're next on this question. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
I think we've seen it. Not everybody's going to have the same opinion. Doesn't matter what issue it is, we're always going to have different opinions based on, you know, people's beliefs, people's thoughts, anything like that, or the way that they like to see it done. Over the years that I've spent on planning and zoning, it's come up multiple times, and I've worked with many of the members that are in front of you here today. It's something where it's listening. You know, what would they like to see? What would they have seen done? You know, what are other options that are there? Is there a common middle ground that's there? I think listening goes a long ways, making sure that you're open for it. It's members that are on there currently, where you can just give them a call and they're able to answer for it. And I think that sets a good example or a good tone for people coming in where, hey, my phone's on there, give me a call. I'd gladly spend a half hour sitting down. Let's see, what's your vision? What would you like to see done? What is it that we are doing currently that doesn't fit the way that you'd like to see done? I think listening goes a long ways for it. And also my experiences that we've done, you know, be able, most things you can work through.
Thank you for your answer. Russ, you're last on this question. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at City Hall and in your own neighborhood?
Well, I think unity, you know, a lot in the community, a lot of it is involvement and community involvement. And I think that's one thing I'd like to see us do more. More citizens get involved in the community. And with, like the parade, for example, Fete du Lox celebration, there's a lot of things we can do to foster community activities. And we have movies in the park, we have music in the park, all of these kind of things to get people involved, encourage people to volunteer, encourage people to get on our planning and zoning, or the parks and recs. We're a community. And like Matt said earlier, take pride in your community. And I think that's what we should do. And it's nice when the law enforcement has a relationship. It's nice when they can stop and say hi to the folks, that we're all here, we're all doing the same thing. And I think we got to get more people involved in the community.
Thank you all for your answers. Did anyone need rebuttal time or extra time after that? Yes, Tom?
When you look at Neighborhood Night Out, there are some neighborhoods in the community that do not participate. Those that do participate, I've noticed that they have a very good time via the fire department or the police coming, which helps the community within itself.
Thank you. Russ?
You know, and that's a good point. And I think we need to promote the night to unite a little more. I think the number of participants has actually been declining the last couple of years. So I think we need to do more to push that presence.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, that's all the questions that I have for you today. But now we have the opportunity, if you so choose, to ask your fellow opponents, your fellow people in this race, a question. Zach, you have the first opportunity to ask the other three gentlemen up here a question, if you want to. If not, you can pass.
I'll pass.
Okay. Matt, you have the next opportunity to ask the others a question.
Like I've said before, I take pride in my city. Love where I live. Centerville has a lot of assets that it has to offer everybody. What do you see as Centerville's greatest asset, and how will you use that if you're on the council?
Okay, you'll each have a minute to respond to that. Russ, you will be up first.
Well, I think Centerville's greatest asset really is the community itself and the people, what we have to offer. We have a great parks and trail system. We have a couple of lakes in Centerville. And we're a solid community, and we're a good community to live in. And I think that's what we need to promote that, and yeah. I think if that's what I take pride in the community, too, Matt, and I think that's one of the reasons why I do planning and zoning, one of the reasons why I've been involved for the last eight or nine years in the Fete du Lox Parade and volunteer for the parade. So I try to do my part and take pride in the community and help where I can.
Okay. Tom, you're next on Matt's question.
Well, the greatest assets, as they said, are the people in what we do. Like they said, they volunteer for Fete du Lox. And me, every Saturday morning, I'm coaching bowling, and that takes about three-quarters of the year. The assets are the people, our system, our parks, our trails. But I notice that they're not utilized as much as I should think that people would want to get out and utilize them. It's not a safety concern as much as, I don't know if it's a time concern, because we are a bedroom community to the larger metro. And so we see some sports and other things going other places, which draws the people away.
Thank you. Zach, your turn now to respond to Matt's question.
I think the greatest asset of Centerville is the parks. I know when I was looking for places to buy a house, I knew the biggest draw was the parks. And they weren't overcrowded, they were nice, there was so much wildlife, and so, you know, so many places to walk, and it kind of gave you that small-town feel. And I think that's one of the biggest draws, and I think that's one of the biggest draws that people have coming to Centerville is, it's nice, it's small, you get a lot of parks, a lot of trails, there's many things to do in that sense. Especially having a dog and stuff, it's nice to be able to walk around and not be bothered by other dogs and, you know, things like that. So I think the parks, by far, is what makes Centerville, yeah.
All right, thank you. Matt, you have 15 seconds to respond after they all answer your question, if you choose.
Yeah, again, Centerville has a lot to offer, and it's something that, again, like we've said multiple times for it, it's just pride in the city for it. So I like to hear that, you know, there's differing opinions on what everybody sees as the asset to Centerville, because they do have a lot of assets. And moving forward, just making sure that we emphasize what we have to offer to everybody, both coming in and the residents that we currently have.
Thank you. Russ, your opportunity, if you choose, to ask a question to be answered by your opponents.
Yeah, my question would be, I believe citizen involvement is very, very important to any community. So people are so busy these days, and with busy schedules, how would you motivate the general public, or how would you motivate people to take a more active role in city events and supporting local businesses?
Okay. Tom, you're up first.
To get people active, I think would be, part is, part on the city government itself, on the city, on the council. If the council gets people out within their own area and get them involved to meet their other neighbors, meet the people six blocks away, I mean, there's only a finite area of Centerville. We should know the people in our town. So when I look at that, you know, the community itself has to step up to the plate a little bit, but it's also the part of those officiating to step up to the plate to make sure it's out, whether they take their own time, or get other people to help volunteer to bring these things out more publicly.
Thank you. Zach, you're the next to respond to Russ's question.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest ways to get people out is to have more events where people, you know, have interest in. I mean, there's a lot of people that have kids and stuff like that. Where can we, you know, what can we do with all the kids? We get all the kids together, and it brings all the adults, and then as a community, you know, things can get passed along that way, and we can learn from each other. And yeah, I think as a community, that's how we grow, you know, finding people's interests, see what they want to do, and, you know? I think that's probably the only way nowadays with all the different video games, things like that, is finding an interest, you know? What do people want to do, and things like that? I think we can, you know, incorporate some of the issues and things with that, you know?
Thank you. Matt, you're next to respond to Russ's question.
Yeah, a lot of times, people start getting involved with the city when they have an issue of something they dislike. One of the things that, from the fire side that we do, is we try and do prevention. Working from the city side, whether it be from a council, planning and zoning, park and rec, you know, we do the Fete du Lox, we get people out. You know, it's starting the communication, both with the businesses, you know, seeing us out a little bit more where we're going in, you know, hey, how's it going today? You know, what have you been seeing? Has business been good? You know, just interacting a little bit more with the community. Not saying we don't do it at all now, but, you know, even that little bit of, like a business directory, you know? For years and years, it's been there. I know it's in the works now, but, you know, we have roughly 80 businesses, whether they be home or shops that are around town, you know, going out, visiting with them, what would they like to see? You know, that also draws a little bit of attention to, okay, EDC, EDAC, is it something that's coming up? You know, what could we do to make Centerville more of a welcome community, too? And I think that just drives more involvement. You know, the more prosperity that we have around, I think the more everybody wants to be involved with.
Thank you. Russ, you have 15 seconds after their answers.
Well, I think I heard it said a little bit here, too, is in communication. And I think having events out there, communicating what these events are to folks is a good way to get involvement, and have events and activities and things going on that people have an interest in, and the city can make sure we communicate that to folks.
All right, thank you. Tom, you have an opportunity, if you choose, to ask a question to your opponents.
This is a question that is of interest of mine. There really is no term for the amount of years that a city council member serves. They go over and over and over again. Do you support having, let's say, a term of two years, or two terms, and then you either relinquish, or you can step into another area of the city?
Zach, you can answer first about term limits.
Yes, I do support that, because I think, I mean, you can make the comparison to like insurance companies. After a couple of years, you're supposed to look for other insurance companies, because they get comfortable, things like that, and they're not as active, and they're not as into it as somebody who's fresh and coming, you know? I think when you get new blood in there and things like that, I think that's when you see new things happen. I think that's where you see communities prosper, is when you get different ideas in there, and different people that want to make a difference. And voting the same guy in, sometimes, you know, he's, all right, I got the job, I can just coast through it, or, you know, maybe I'll put a little effort into it when there's a big topic, but other than that, I'll coast. And I think it's one of the reasons why I want to run, is to make sure that they're not just coasting, because I know a couple of them have been on the board for a while, and I want to bring some new blood in.
Thank you. Matt, you're next.
Yeah, I think that's one of the big things about this election, is we have two open seats, which hasn't happened in a long time. I actually don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I do support term limits for it. I also know that there are some people out there that do a fantastic job that were elected. So if we do have a term limit, I don't think it should be a capped term limit. So you can do two, step down for two, and when the next election comes up, you could be back, where it's not just running on the same ticket every single time, but stepping back, okay, the last two years you weren't there, was the city better off without you? Or was it because you were there that we were able to hopefully see the prosperity that you were bringing to the city?
Thank you. Russ?
Yeah, I would not support term limits, especially in the size of community that we're in. I think the pool to draw from for candidates may not be, because it is a smaller community, the pool wouldn't be as, maybe quite as large as a bigger city would. So I think ultimately, term limits really are, the term limit is in the hands of the voters. If they feel someone is not doing a very good job, they need to vote them out. And I think so, I wouldn't support it. And I think if someone is doing a very, a good job in the city, and people are happy with that, yeah, I think they should be rewarded with another term, if that's what the people want. The people have the opportunity to exercise term limits by their vote.
Thank you. You have 15 seconds, if you wanted to respond to anything, Tom.
I was just curious about that, because I hear that in the community when I talk to different people in the community. They say, well, why has this person been in there for 10, 12 years? Or why does he do anything for the city? And, you know, like most things, let the voters decide.
Thank you. We're going to move now to our closing statements to finish our debate. Zach, you'll be first with your closing statement, and you have one minute.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm an up-and-coming family. I got two young kids, and I just want to make sure that Centerville is ran efficiently, and safety's a priority, and everything like that. I want to make sure that we're not spending, and we're looking towards the future, because that's ultimately what we got to plan for. I think as the city grows, things like that, you know, putting thought into where we're spending the money, you know? What we're doing and how we're doing it is kind of the big things. And I just want to make sure that when my kids grow up in this community, that, you know, it's safe, and it's the small-town feel like I have, and there's so much to offer like there is. And yeah, that's why I want to run.
Thank you. Matt Montane, you're next with your closing statement.
First off, Zach, Russ, Tom, Ben, thank you very much. Again, appreciate the time that we're able to voice our opinions and get it out there to the community. I think it's invaluable to keep everybody informed with what we have. Through everything that I've said tonight, through my actions on the commission, through my involvement through the fire department, I hope people see that, again, I do love where I live. I do have a lot to offer the city. We have an option, or we have the opportunity here, with two fresh set of eyes to come onto the board. And I think it's one of those that, the more informed that the citizens are, I think they're going to make the right decision. We live in a great city. And again, hopefully, everybody gets out and votes on November there.
Thank you. Russ, you're up next with your closing statement.
Yeah, and first of all, thanks, thank you to North Metro TV for hosting this, that's terrific. And thank you to all the candidates here also, for your dedication to the community and taking the time to run for public office, says a lot. I've been asked a couple of times why I'm running for city council, why would I want to do it? And for me, the answer's really rather simple, is I want to do my part. I care about the community I live in, and I want to do my part to support it. That's why I have spent a lot of time going to city council meetings over the years, public hearings, time on planning and zoning, volunteering for the parade. I do it because I want to do my part as a member of this city, and I love the city. 22 years, and I don't plan on going anywhere. So that's, again, that's why I'm thinking, I'd like to appreciate your support for city council.
Thank you very much for your closing statement. Tom, you're last up with your closing statement tonight.
Thank you. Thanks to North Metro TV, it's been an honor. And to the gentleman sitting to the right of me, I appreciated, I miss working with Russ and Matt on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but this is my next step. After 11 years on planning and zoning, my next step is to help with the financial and movement of the city to develop businesses, and to possibly cut some fat off the budget, or see if we can even cut some fat off the budget. But it comes down to auditing, making sure it's spent correctly, and everything. That's why I'm running for city council. I would love to see business development in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for taking some time out of your schedules to come in today and participate in our debate. I appreciate it. I want to thank the candidates for Centerville City Council, Zach Naess, Matt Montane, Russ Kosky, and Tom Wood. And again, there is a fifth candidate in this race that decided not to participate in this debate. Remember, you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete local decision election coverage, it's all there for you. Candidate biographies, more debates like this, and all the races that will be following all the way to Election Day, where we'll also have live results on Election Night here on North Metro TV. You can watch, this will be the only place for in-depth analysis of you. You can watch, this will be the only place for in-depth analysis of your local elections. I've been your moderator, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching.